We'll call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Dutterman.
Here.
Sealy.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obern.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Kraft, City Engineer. Hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving. I'll make this for a short. So this is a thing that's like, I've never known how to respond to people that come into the office and just ask for their alleys to be paved. I think that, I think it's a valid concern. A lot of citizens in this town live on the street, but their garage is in the back and they drive on a gravel alley to get to their garage. So, I mean, it's obvious that they would want to know if the city's going to pave it. And I think no is never like a really good answer. At least it's not for me. That's usually what I say, because historically, we haven't done a lot of alley paving. I've been here for 20 years and we have never really done it unless there's a super good reason to, like an incredible drainage problem, an erosion problem, a flooding issue, and then budgets are always tight. We can fit those little one-off things into the road use tax fund. So, I just want, like, really to have an answer for the people that come in, and there are a lot of them. It keeps, it keeps growing. Like this year, I think there's been, probably wouldn't say 10, maybe between 5 and 10, though. And so finally, I just, like, you know, we have a conversation with them, and then I met one fellow who's here today that wrote up a petition, because I was like, that may be the best way to communicate to the council, to come up with some sort of a program. And in the end, we, I just want to be clear, we can always say no to the residents and citizens. I'm fine with that, too. I just want to be, I want some clear directives, and so I thought I'd come up with some information. But yeah, I mean, no one really wants to live on a gravel alley, so. I've got this inventory that I put in the packet of gravel alleys. I think we have most of them covered, and there's about 16 miles of gravel alleys. So, a lot of the, a lot of communities around one, Davenport, has like a cost share program. If you want your alley to be paved, and at least half of the residents would like to share in the cost of that, the city of Davenport will pave your alley and send you a bill. So hypothetically, this could be any cost sharing arrangement. So the one that I put in the report was hypothetically 25% of costs paid by property owners, 75% covered by the city if it's a residential alley. I think I included in there that, that half of the, at least half of the abutting property owners would have to agree to this, and then the city could arrange to have that paved and invoices be sent, and they can be paid, you know, it could be paid out over a certain number of years. They could be assessed to the property taxes, whatever that may be. And I did some thinking about what this would cost the city, and if it would have any benefit. I think it would clearly have benefit. We do, you know, we do maintain the alleys, try to. The Public Works Department's upgrading alleys quite a bit all year long, usually after every rain event. And they become harder and harder to maintain, because they add gravel every year, probably. And it, sometimes the alley gets to be the highest point in the world, and then the water will pond the back in garages. So it's very problematic. I think it would be, if the city could afford to do this, I think it would be a great program, of course. And one of the benefits of the cost sharing program is it would, it would help us select which alleys to pave every year. It's first come, first served, right? Similar to the sidewalk program. If, because if we are trying to decide which alleys to pave, that's a bad spot to be in. There are, you know, hundreds, I think there's, yeah, there's obviously hundreds of alleys, so I don't even know where to begin. So, putting together a budget, assuming that half of the alleys would have residents or abutting property owners that would agree to be included in this program, you could cut that $4 million down to two, and on the high end, over a 10-year period, including inflation, you're talking about $1.5 million city expenditure, and half the alleys would be paved in 10 years if the residents wanted to be included in it. We would not force this upon the majority of the residents. So, the budget could be anything. You could set it at whatever you want. You could direct our department to do that. The hypothetical budget that I put together and plan that I put together was $150,000 a year. That's what it would cost. So there's a lot of options. I think that Jermaine Cox would like to come up and say a few things. But ultimately, it's really up to you to be included in the budget or not. Do we start small? Is this a good cost sharing proposal? Do we want to rework that? I would leave that up to you folks, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. But I certainly think that if you drive around all the gravel alleys in town, you would, you would want to see them paved. And I'm sure that all of you know a few people that live on these alleys, so. Do you have any questions for me now? Otherwise, I think maybe Jermaine would like to talk.
I can answer questions, too. I'm pretty smart. Not as smart as Jason, but, so my name is Jermaine Cox. I live in the 1200 box of, block of Pershing Boulevard. The no parking signs actually was because of me and that block. And then, as I was doing that, I was talking to the neighbors, and our alley is gravel. And every winter, we noticed that with the heavy garbage trucks and, and recycling truck, it just gets divots. And then, like you mentioned with the rain, with the rain situation, we do get a lot of rain in Iowa, obviously. But then, as you drive down our alley, and I've driven a couple alleys today, and it's the same all over with all these gravel alleys is, the, they're putting more gravel than, than they need to, and they're not taking enough off. So basically, the gravel is above the approach to driveways, and what does that do? It floods the driveway. So then, their approach to get into their driveway, so when they open the garage door, water's going in and it's not leaving. So, for my neighborhood, what I would like to see is it get paved. I, I did a petition in July, and it's already been signed, so we're ready to go. My only thing is, is I don't think we need to send, I, I, I would like to have it assessed to property taxes. That's what I, that's what I told the folks that we would do. I'm from Davenport, and so my old neighborhood, we did the alley program with the city, where we paid half and the city paid half. They came in, they did all their work, they ran and out within a week. And so, I know how the program should work, and, and so I just believe that the city of Clinton needs to take more action, because, to the, with the alley program, just because if you want people to stay, you want to fix their roads, so why not fix the alleys? The alley is what gets people into their driveways. And so, in the approaches, approaches are bad getting into the alleys. It's either too high, and you're hitting the, the front of your car when you leave, or you're hitting it when you come in. And we're just trying to make it better for everybody in the neighborhood that has to use their alley to get into their garage.
Okay. Any questions for?
In Davenport, who, who maintained the alleys? That would be the city, right?
As far as?
As far as the upkeep?
I mean, if we get the alley done, there shouldn't be any upkeep. You mean as far as snow removal?
Well, the snow removal will probably be on the?
That would be on the citizens and?
But I mean, eventually, that, that, all payment needs some kind of maintenance.
They use blacktop there, so, but it would, it would fall back on the city at that point. But you would think if they redid an alley this year, that should be good for 10, 15 years, right?
You would hope.
Exactly.
It would be at least that.
Yeah, at least. So I think we should be fine, you know, for 15 years down the road. And hopefully by then, the alley fund has enough money within it to maintain at that point.
And you said 50%? Davenport, you guys do 50%?
No, it's 75.
75, so?
This is, the proposal is 75, 25. But in Davenport, when you guys did it?
I believe it was, yeah, 50%.
But did they lean the taxes, or did you pay cash?
Nope, leaned the taxes. I don't have that kind, yeah, special assessment. Not everybody has that kind of money, so, I mean, we just?
How did they handle the property owners that didn't have that kind of money, period?
Everybody signed on to the petition. That's the, that's the good thing about it. If you, if you're good with your neighbors and you explain to them what's going to happen, they'll, a lot of, and all my neighbors were happy to do it except one, because they don't access the alley.
Okay. But what about those, if it only requires 50% buy-in, what about those that actually cannot afford to pay this?
It's not that they can, it's that they didn't want to.
Well, no, there's people on?
If, okay, if they can't, then I think at that point, we have to come up with another solution by either?
Your bill gets divided up.
Probably, yeah.
Probably that way. And then they pay.
And then we would pay.
I'm not opposed to this at all, but I think this needs to be earmarked as a budget item, and we'll even see if we can even fund anything next year before we adopt this. Because what's the point of having this program, just like sidewalk program? You have these things and you can't fund them. So I, I would, I mean, I'm not against this at all. In fact, I'm fine with it if the budget allows for it.
I mean, I think there's a million dollars from tailgate and toll boys, right?
Well, that's not in the budget.
Oh, dang it. I thought. I was thinking ahead.
So, just so you're aware, there are alleys in town that are paved because owners just got together and paved them themselves.
No, I understand. Yeah, but at this juncture in, in everyone's life, it's like you said, not everybody has that much money on hand.
I, I agree.
So that's why I'm coming to the city to try to figure out?
Yeah, one of my concerns is putting someone in a position where they can't literally afford to pay for it, and we're trying to force them to.
But we're not. It's just like Jason said.
Well, that, this doesn't say that, so that'd be something we need to think about. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's just like Alderman Dutterman said, you know, you would divide it, I guess, amongst everyone else that wanted it.
If there's 12, 10 wanted it, 2 couldn't afford it, and the other 2, the other 2 pay.
Yeah, we would.
What are the qualifications for not affording it? You know, there's more that goes into it than that, right? Can I not afford it because I don't want to, or can I actually not afford it because I'm on security?
They don't want to. I don't want it. I can afford it. I just don't want it.
Correct.
But if you want to do it, go ahead.
Well, you have, that's, that's what, I was just going to say that you have to have standards. And hypothetically, this is not, I mean, this is not even to be argued. This is just to be discussed. I mean, I just put it in there for a starting?
Oh, no, yeah, we're not arguing.
You got them all fired up, Jason.
I don't want you guys to think that I'm trying to advocating forcing this on people. It just, a starting point seemed like, hey, if more than half the people want it, that's kind of a democratic solution. But maybe it's 75%. And I also wanted to say that a typical lot, typical alley paving project being $25,000, a typical lot would be, maybe if there's 10 lots, let's say $2,000. If it was 25% of that, that's $500. If you pay it over 10 years, that's $50. You pay your taxes twice a year, it's 25 bucks. Twice a year, assess your taxes. I know that most people that own a property can afford $25 every 3.
Right. You can drive on that nice, see?
And it's nice, because as I was talking to Jermaine, another thing is, it's just, it's so much easier to get ready your property when you want to sell it if the person you're trying to sell it to can access their garage on a paved alley. So it is a little benefit to the property owner.
And it makes your neighborhood looks nice, look nice.
Let's go to Councilmember Shemmers.
You know what's interesting, and I did have somebody call me this last snow season, and they did have a paved or alley of some kind. I don't know if it's concrete or paved, but they were wanting to know why the city, since it was paved, wasn't running the plows through there. So, I know we don't do that, but people assume if it's paved, the city takes care of it, to include the snow plowing.
Most communities do not pave alleys. There's no, there's not?
But no, this was from, this was from somebody in my ward that called me, that they had a paved alley. And they were wanting to know, they were upset with me because the city was not maintaining the snow plowing on the city right-of-way in the alley, which was paved by the city. I, there's just, I agree, there's a lot more that needs to be worked out on that, should that program go through, because, and maybe it's, you know, if your alley, if your home wants it, and everybody agrees to it, they know what the standards are that has to be met. Doesn't mean that everybody else in the city's alleys wants to go along with that, but everybody that signs off on your petition agrees these are the standards that are going to be met or not met by the city and the residents.
Got you next.
Yeah, I understand that, and I think most of, I think most of the residents in my neighborhood understand that, like, we would be responsible for getting it plowed if we did do this. So, and I, I honestly think that most folks would hopefully understand that the city isn't going to just bring a snow plow down your alley just to make one, one line. It's?
Well, yeah, but I'm telling you, I got the phone call, and, and, and I'm not saying good or bad. I'm not, I don't have an alley, so I, but my point is, if there's a section of town that wants the alley, it's going to be, they're going to have to be educated on what is and what cannot happen by the city. It's all, that's all I'm saying.
They're not paying the alley in town. They're not, we don't plow.
Because it was a really good question to me, and I ended up having to get ahold of Brian Limkey, saying, hey, you know, check your map on GPS, because you guys, and he goes, well, we don't do alleys. So, well, that was an easy answer, but it wasn't, it wasn't a happy phone call when I returned it, so.
And an alley will also last.
Let's go to Councilmember Kearns, please.
So I love the idea of good alleys, because I love people parking in the back of their house. They're not on the street. That's the best, that's the best scenario, right? But we have alleys that are paved in town, and we are a town on a riverbed for the most part. The bottoms here, we're on a riverbed. We have paved alleys in town that you can lose a Volkswagen in some of the, in some of the potholes. Listen, my sister lives on one Fifth Avenue South. It's, you have to literally either stra, she's Earth's neighbor. You have to straddle and hope your tires are wide enough to get past that thing. You can't, you can't drive, because you're afraid the whole thing's going to?
But that was paved in like the 40s, right?
Rhonda, we need an alley management program that we'll have to fund as well, right?
Now, listen, so, so I understand.
It's still part of running cities.
I understand that, that, you know, having alleys paved is good, but there are still potholes that come with that, and, and it's not the end-all, be-all. I mean, maybe yours would be great. I don't have any idea, but we are not maintaining the alleys that we have. We're not, if we're filling in these potholes and we're putting too much gravel where it's pushing water into people's garages, okay, that's a problem that we need to fix. We have to not put so much gravel. We need to fill the potholes and not put so much gravel that it's raising these alleys to put water back. I mean, so, you know, on, on one hand, if there's something we can do to put a little less gravel and just fill the potholes, that's one thing. We can do that. We can take care of that. But I just don't, I'm not against it. Don't get me wrong. I am not against this. And I think anytime that citizens come together and say that we are happy to pay to get what we want, I, I love that. But just because you get a paved alley doesn't mean it's not going to be a problem, because we got concrete alleys all over that are a problem.
But if it's done correctly and it's maintained the right way?
But we're on a riverbed. We've got washouts all over town. I mean?
No, those, those issues are, are fairly isolated, and they're, they would have to be maintained, and it would also be?
They're not that isolated.
But it would also, but, but it would also be maintained as part of this program as well. And an alley would let, will last a lot longer than a street. There's not a lot of traffic on an alley, not a lot of massive, enormous garbage trucks and buses.
So when, and I know that we haven't worked out everything, but when you say be maintained as part of this program as well, so you're saying now, these people paid for their alley, and they get into the situation like Earth's Alley. Are they going to have to 15 or 20 years down the road, or, or five years if things go wrong? Because they've filled Earth's Alley in before, and within six months, it's sunk back down to losing a Volkswagen, so?
So at Earth's Alley, there are sewer issues, there are utility concerns. And that's what I mean by isolated. Like, maintenance of paving, of a pavement system is different from undermining duty utilities. And I know what, I know what Earth's Alley's problems are in that alley. But the maintenance program, yes, there's, there's a long-term vision, and I'm sure Brian could talk about this. A long-term vision for the city to be maintaining, Public Works Department to be maintaining streets, potholes, doing concrete patches, being able to maintain alleys and streets as they do now. They, they spend a lot of time dumping gravel, trying to grade.
I know they do.
But a resurfacing of an alley would still be, it would be slightly, I don't think it would be any different cost, actually. But it would be, also be part of this program. But an alley resurfacing would, would be, I would think, 25 years from the initial pavement. Like I said, it's not, it's just light vehicle traffic. There's not really many alley thoroughfares. Those alleys do not take a beating, and the gravel is so, already so compacted. By the time you put three, four inches of asphalt on top of it, it should last 20 to 25 years. And a resurfacing of that alley would also come out of this program. It would be better. And gra, anytime you, you fully restore a gravel alley, it won't be long before, there's a few trucks that drive by it. It rains three inches, and now there's potholes everywhere. And people had a, a greater tolerance for uncomfortable environmental conditions in, in history. Now everyone has a bit more prosperous outlook on their accessibility concerns to their garage and properties. And gravel is just not, not cutting it, you know what I mean?
I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I, I get it. I just, I don't want anybody that signs up for this to think that, you know, it's, it's the end-all, be-all, because it's not necessarily.
No, it's not end-all, be-all.
Okay, Councilmember Obern.
I want to say that was pretty diplomatic there. Now, here's, you brought up, you brought up one piece that in my alley, there is a water main going through it that services both sides of the alley. It has broke not less than eight times over the past decade, and is digging up, and, you know, we're resurfacing it and getting the grader in there all the time. In fact, it needs to be done now, because we just had another one break two months ago, so. The, the hurdle that is going to happen with a program like this is what is under the alley to start with. You mentioned it, utilities, what's, you know, especially utilities if they're going down the alley to service it. And, and something goes wrong there, you know, we, we also are going to have, what are those things called? You know, communication, you know, networks that are under the alley and what happened? There, there are those issues that need to be looked at and included in a program. If we're going to say, hey, we're going to, you know, pave the alley, okay, what happens if there's some kind of utility breakdown, some kind of communication breakdown? You know, how is that going to happen, and how does that get repaired? You know, within, it's got nothing to do with the beautifulness of the pavement.
Yeah, that's just like, like, no, no program is ever perfect. And this was part of the problem with the sidewalk program. It got to be, we're trying to?
You're supposed to speak into the mic, please.
We're just trying to find a perfect program all the time, and nothing's ever perfect. We, we end up, there's always these scenarios, hypothetical what-ifs, and if, if that's, if that's going to dictate the, the fact that we don't, don't do a program, I think it would be wrong. But, but certainly, an alley would be maintained much like a street, you know? Like, so if a water main construction project occurred in an alley that was paved, it'd be so much easier for the water company or their contractor to fix that. It would be very clear what they have to do. On a gravel alley or something that's just riddled with potholes and years of cold mix, I think it's kind of unclear sometimes. The, the water department or whoever fixes these water mains might just pack some asphalt in the hole and leave, and that's, it's hard to maintain. So, a resurfaced alley is going to be much easier to maintain for any utility companies, so I think it's actually a, a good thing.
Councilmember Shemmers.
Just one last thing. I think this is an outstanding topic to be had in the budget session starting in January, and I believe Ron and Eartha probably would agree with me on that.
I, I was just going to, I was actually just going to say that, do we, does this, this plan need to be kicked down to Neighborhood Improvement or Traffic Safety or one of those committees to kind of start, or a subcommittee of council members to come up with a more defined plan? Because I think a lot of people brought up a lot of great points that need to be considered, and we need to bring something back like that. And to your point as well, it needs to come in front of the council here coming budget season.
I think Neighborhood Improvement is a great place to start, and they can pull in a couple of extra council members. I mean?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think you're spot on, everybody. It's, it's two parts. One is, I think you guys need to agree on a codified plan of how it works. Meaning, if you have a neighbor, doctor here, comes forward with a petition and does that, meets all the criteria, that's part A. And we need, I think we can do that. Part B, then, every year, we'll bring that item to you during budget season for yea or nay. And that, that way, the citizens can know right up front, and it's fair and impartial to all. So if you don't have a couple that want to play, that's fine, but then we know, hey, you kind of set the standard, sir. You know, bring in your neighbor, getting the neighbors together, they come together, that's something done by the neighborhood, not by the city. They bring that forward, and then they get racked and stacked if the funding is available.
Travis, did you have a comment you wanted to make? Okay.
Maybe this young man would want to be part of the committee, because he's, he's pretty smart, I hear.
Yeah, I mean, we, for one, one second. I mean, it can be, it can be a committee of council members and some citizens if we want to do it that way. Council, you can, you can set it up however you want. It doesn't have to be Neighborhood Improvement. It's up to you. Or we can, you can have representation from the Neighborhood Improvement Committee in the subcommittee, however you want to do that.
You can have council members that are going to join in January could be on it.
Right. Okay, so Travis, go ahead with your comment.
Travis, winner?
We have, we currently have in the city, we still have gravel city roads with no curb and gutter. I feel that we should be looking at those roads before we worry about alleys.
I think that's a whole separate issue.
I mean, those, we, we do a, we can put that in the pavement management program.
That's not your fault. You're good. You're fine. You're good.
You want to talk about infrastructure? That's where we're going. No, I, I totally get it, but infrastructure, again, I get it. Roads, nobody really cares about alleys. But, again, if you want to keep citizens here, you want to keep them happy. I know you don't have a tire program. Somebody gets a ho, and run into that pothole and bust your tire, city ain't going to co, cover that.
She used to have a Volkswagen. Now she doesn't.
But I, to the point, I just, I honestly, well, I'm, I'm totally going to just like hammer you guys until we get something done. Just because alleys is, a lot of folks in Clinton have alleys that you got to drive in. I drove between Fourth and Fifth Avenue North tonight, and that was just horrid. And so, we got to do something as a committee and as a community as a whole.
I think the consensus here is they want to do something. We just have to figure out what, what the group, what group you want to put together in order to devise the plan. That's, that's where we're at.
And I'll, I'll be happy, like you said, I'll, I'll help, I'll sit on it, and I got ideas, so.
All right. So what do you?
A working group Rhonda's going to run.
I think, I think Travis.
Travis?
And Travis.
Travis volunteered? Okay, so there we go.
I'll, I'll be on it.
Okay, Rhonda, Greg?
I have no alley, so I should not participate.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you, I'm sure you own alleys or houses that have alleys. I'm sure you, I'm sure you, I'm sure you own alleys, or houses that have alleys. Yeah, so, Rhonda, Rhonda and Greg, and then we'll, I guess Travis will be, after January, he'll be the other council member, so, those three, I think, Mr. Cox, you want to have him in there, and then, we need to find some other, Jason, some other citizen, maybe a couple other citizens that want to be involved in it.
Sure.
Earth should be a citizen.
Yeah. We want Earth on.
I, I do think, I do think you should get one person from the Neighborhood Improvement Committee to represent in this group, I think that makes sense.
Yep, sure.
Whoever you choose.
Whichever. Whoever.
Um, but yeah, I think Rhonda can work on that, and I can help you with Neighborhood Improvement if you want, but...
I wanted to add one thing due to Travis Winter's comment, is a city street could also be included in this program. I mean, it's, it's very hard to, for the city sometimes to prioritize total pavement of gravel streets, when the property owners who bought houses upon those gravel streets bought them as gravel abutting homes, so it's like, to then expect that we will spend a million dollars on paving that street is, is a little hard, so we could, maybe we could have a, a joint program where alleys and streets, unimproved streets are included in this alley pavement program as well, really is the same type of thing.
It's just the street's a lot more money.
Yes, the street is a lot more money.
All right. So, um, I don't know if we need a, do we need a motion to move this to the subcommittee, or do we want to just do that? Okay, so we're going to, we're going to, yep, we're going to go to that subcommittee, build that up, and then bring it back...
Bring it on back.
Um, for the, for the plan, and then it'll be put into the budget session as the discussions go. Is that fair for everyone? Good? Okay. Uh, Mr. Brook?
Doctor, thank you, Your Honor. The last piece is, we kept folks waiting in the balcony there. Uh, so this is, I discussed the sixty, Fourth Avenue South, parcel eighty, ten, seventy-nine, double zero one. This is the old white Canadian Pacific depot in front of the post office. Midwest Lumber Museum has approached the city with the purchase of this property, looking to do a, intended to, for a donation to five oh one C three nonprofit for charitable purposes, supporting the future development for the Sami museum. Project expected to provide a public benefit and contribute to the goals of the urban renewal development area, which member runs from Highway thirty all the way up to Lyons and beyond. Because this site is located in urban real area, though, we have to do competitive bids, and so, we'll see if there's any other interested parties out there as well, in ensuring that this project's undertaken similar or greater value to the community. We'd like to look at getting your discussion on this, to move this forward and put it on a, on a regular council meeting to be able to then put out for bid. Yes?
The only thing we ever talked about this building, how many years ago, was a brewery. I mean, so...
And it did, it did store the brewery stuff for about a year.
For a while, so...
A little different.
No, no.
No, we don't, so I, I'm all for, let's see if we can sell it.
Was that a motion, Greg?
That was a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There you go.
We have a motion and a second for item two B?
Or not to be.
Or not to be. Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Obern.
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Yes.
All right, um, updates, I will say that we had the holiday trade earlier today, very well-attended, a lot of fun.
Good weather.
I saw Casey dancing to Smash Mouth, which, I thought he was doing traffic duty, but he was...
He lost all credibility, right?
He's the Dancing Traffic Cup.
Yeah, yeah, it was good. No, uh, very big crowd, very, very cool.
Yeah, exactly.
Lucky to have them stop every year here, um, so, it was, it was good. Any other updates from anyone else?
Just remember to say Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Small Saturdays, support your local...
I said Happy Thanksgiving on the holiday train, if you were there.
There you go.
Tree lighting next Friday.